No two on July 23rd, 2024. And I will call the regular city commission meeting for the city of Ormond Beach to order. I hope you felt welcomed as you came in tonight. Our planning director, Steve Spraker, and our IT manager Chuck Osteen served as greeters tonight. If you needed a card to speak, they would have handed you one. I do have a few cards here. And I'd like to introduce the folks who are sitting up in front of you. To my right, your left, recording secretaries, Taylor Lockhart and Justin Isaacs with us. Next is city clerk Susan Daughtry. Our Zone One Commissioner Lori Tolland.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome.
Zone Two Commissioner Travis Sargent.
Good evening, everyone.
To my left and your right, our Zone Three Commissioner Susan Persis.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome.
Then our deputy mayor and Zone Four Commissioner Harold Brierley.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome.
City Manager Joyce Shanahan and Assistant City Manager Sean Finley making his first appearance. Then we have City Attorney Randy Hayes. Don't feel bad about no applause, Randy. They're used to you being here. Police Chief way to my left and way to your right, we have the chiefs who do an amazing job for our city, Police Chief Jesse Godfrey and Fire Chief Howard Bailey. For those of you listening online, you can clap for that, absolutely. I'm Mayor Bill Partington. And at this time, if you would, silence your cell phones and rise for the invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Invocation tonight given by Reverend Willie Branch.
And we recognize our unweatherness for our goodness, oh Father. We come not asking for your justice, we ask for your mercy. We realize our need for clear heads, returning minds in your wisdom and direction. Give us the which we need to do the work that is before us, as we invoke your blessing upon all of us this day. Granted, oh Lord, in that we will do, we will honor you and our city. It's in your name I pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we are on four A, adoption of the fiscal year 24-25 tentative millage rate. And I'll ask the clerk to read four A by title, please.
Resolution number 2024-97, a resolution adopting proposed millage rates for the 2024-2025 fiscal year, establishing the date, time, and place for the first public hearing on the proposed millage rates and the tentative budget, directing communication expressing legislative intent and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number 2024-97, read by title only.
Thank you. And per Florida statute, I'm required to state that the tentative millage rate for the city of Ormond Beach necessary to fund the fiscal year 24-25 budget is 4.0960 mils. This rate is 12.82% above the rollback rate of 3.6305 mils. The tentative debt service millage is 0.065 for the 2010 general obligation bond sinking fund. This is a public hearing. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak or ask questions prior to adoption of the tentative millage rate? Did you get any cards, Madam Clerk?
No, I did not.
All right, at this time, I'll ask for a motion and second to adopt the tentative millage rates.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. The tentative operating millage of 4.0960 mils is 12.82% above the rollback millage rate of 3.6305 mils. The resolution also includes adoption of the tentative debt service millage rate of 0.065 for the 2010 general obligation bond sinking fund. Where's Kelly? Did I read all that correctly, Kelly? Okay, thank you. All right, at this point, please call the vote.
Commissioner Tolland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Brierley?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. The tentative operating millage rate is now set at 4.0960 mils, which is 12.82% above the rollback millage rate of 3.6305 mils. And thank you all very much for that. The reason that went so smoothly is we had an hour and a half of workshop prior to this meeting, and then we had a few weeks prior to both of these meetings today for us to meet individually with staff and kind of go back and forth with all the different numbers. So Joyce, thank you and your staff for putting that together. Also, the budget advisory board weighed in on everything. I know it's a lot of work, but you were able to get it done.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, but all the credit goes to the finance director, Kelly McGuire, and the Assistant Finance Director, Chris Spile. They do an excellent job every year with great dedication and great efficacy, so we're very grateful for that.
Awesome. Thank you. And now we will move to audience remarks, starting with Rony, hopefully I said that right, David, and Nancy Epps. How are you?
And we do have a PowerPoint, so I'll wait until it's started. But thank you very much for having us here tonight, Mayor, and council members, commissioners, rather, I'm sorry, I was on the council, it's a town council, so I used to be the mayor, so it's kind of comforting to be here again. But we started in 1979. This is the Conklin Davis Center today, but we started as the Conklin Center for the multiple handicapped blind, which we don't use that term anymore, but it is a unique place in the United States, actually, not just Florida, but the whole United States. So we serve people who are not only blind, but have additional disabilities, including things like cerebral palsy, autism spectrum, delayed learning. Of course, we deal with some deafness, but we're unique in the other types of disabilities that we work with. So we just wanted to give you a little bit of an idea of who we are and what we do, because we do affect the four county area of Volusia, Flagler, Gravir, and Putnam. So, you know, obviously, we speak the entire county of Volusia. And these are some of the programs that we offer, and I'm going to let our CEO, Ronnie, take over.
I always have to lower microphones wherever I go. Thank you for inviting us here today. My name's Ronnie David. I've been at the center for 32 years. And some of the photos you see here are talking about our services. And this one right here is a job simulation, like a workshop type. And we have a partnership with Metro Electronics in Daytona Beach, and they supply parts to our job simulation area. It's kind of like a little mini manufacturing that the students do, and we pay them a wage, but we use it as an assessment process where we assess their work-related skills while they're in the program during that period of time. So they learn how to work and how to get to work on time and how to budget their money. So we have really the residential program that we took over in 2021 is, as Nancy was saying, a very unique program. There's nothing like it in the United States. And the camps that we're located on in Daytona Beach is quite unique as well. What you see on the screen right now, we have local artists that work with us from the Daytona Art League. And our building, it's filled with paintings. It looks, it's really beautiful. It looks like a gallery. You can see, here's a picture of our lobby with the paintings. The paintings are all over all the hallways in the building. It's really beautiful. These are some of our supporters and partners. And we just are about to start a new program with our students where we received a grant to create an art program for visually impaired people, and our artists are working with us on developing that. So we have some quite innovative-type programs that we offer. And time's up.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
For hearing us. And please visit us at 405 White Street for a tour.
Sure will. Thank you. Appreciate all you do. Becky Parker with Ormond Main Street.
Hello?
Good evening.
I'm Becky Parker. I am the executive director of Ormond Beach Main Street. Have a couple of fun things to share with you tonight, but I first wanted to recognize the departure of Claire Whitley, who was a great friend to our organization, and we will definitely miss her, but we love Sean Finley, so we're excited to continue that partnership, and thank you for everything you've done with us so far, and looking forward to continuing to working with you. So we, whenever possible, try to honor and recognize the people that make Ormond Main Street and all of our projects possible. We are a volunteer-led organization. We have two staff members, and we use, we utilize efforts of about 250 volunteers over the course of a year. So recently, last week, we were in Tallahassee for the Secretary of State Awards. There are about 60 other Main Street programs across the state of Florida, so we're talking thousands and thousands of people that our candidates were running against, but I, we nominated our board member, Nanti Cortez, to win Board Member of the Year, which she did, and Ayes Franca, who owns Art Spotlight, for Business Owner of the Year. So I just wanted to honor them, recognize them, and they are putting Ormond Beach on the map, and just happy that we have business owners and volunteers like them, so. Lastly, we have Christmas in July coming up on Saturday. I hope everyone's going to go out and see Santa, and I will be dressed up as an elf, escorting around. We've got over 50 businesses participating, and this is just a way, it's a free event, it's just a way to, this is a slow, slow time of year for a lot of our small locally-owned businesses. The restaurants and shops will be happy to see you, and they'll have lots of treats and surprises, and that's about it. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. All right. That is all the cards that I have, and we will move to approval of minutes. The minutes have been sent to the commission for review, also posted to the city's website. Any additions, deletions, or corrections commissioned? These are the June 4th, 2024 regular city commission meeting.
Mr. Mayor, move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose like sign, and we'll show those passing unanimously. The following items are community redevelopment items. The city commission in Ormond Beach serves as the community redevelopment agency of the city and must review these items and make a recommendation as the CRA. Therefore, at this time, we will recess the city commission meeting and call the CRA meeting to order. As chairman of the CRA, I'll open the public hearings and ask our secretary to read seven A, please.
Resolution number 2024-98, a resolution of the city commission also acting as the community redevelopment agency of the city of Ormond Beach, Florida, authorizing the execution of a lump sum relocation agreement between the city and FPNL regarding the undergrounding of utilities at the intersection of North Halifax and East Granada Boulevard, authorizing payment therefore and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number 2024-98, read by title only.
Thank you. I do not have any cards on this item. Is there any discussion?
I'll just say one thing, and this is long overdue, and I move that we approve this.
Second.
So, as chairman, I'll accept this is your motion to recommend to the city commission of Ormond Beach, a very good-looking group of people. That we approve this.
Yes, sir.
And Commissioner Persis was the second, correct?
Yes.
All right. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And we'll move to seven B.
Resolution number 2024-99, a resolution of the city commission also acting as the community redevelopment agency of the city of Ormond Beach, Florida, authorizing the execution of a letter of agreement for custom work and estimate of actual cost government agreement between the city and AT&amp;T regarding the undergrounding of utilities at the intersection of North Halifax and East Granada Boulevard, authorizing payment therefore and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number 2024-99, read by title only.
Thank you. Again, I don't have any cards.
I move approval of resolution number 2024-99.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose like sign, and we will show both of those recommendations to the commission passing unanimously. I'll close the public hearings. We'll reconvene the city commission meeting, and now that we have the recommendation from the CRA board as to eight A and eight B, we can move to the consent agenda. Does any commissioner wish to pull any items off of the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the consent agenda submitted.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Please call the vote.
Commissioner Brierley?
Yes.
Commissioner Tolland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. Nine A. I will open the public hearings and ask the clerk to read nine A, please.
Ordinance number 2024-11, an ordinance amending section 2-262, schedule of civil fines of Division III, classification of violations and fines of Article VII, code enforcement of Chapter II administration. Section 8-3, local amendments to building code of Article I in general of Chapter Eight, Buildings and Construction Regulations, and section 8-4.1, reserved of Article I in general of Chapter Eight, Buildings and Construction Regulations of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Ormond Beach, to implement the state mandated milestone inspections, reports, and repairs within section 553.899 of the Florida statutes for condominiums or cooperative association buildings three stories or higher, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number 2024-11, read by title only.
Thank you. And I don't have any cards, Mr. Mayor. Question? Deputy Mayor.
And I guess this would just be to Randy. I guess this is probably more housekeeping than anything, just to comply with state law.
Yes.
Okay. My only concern was I didn't know with all of the three-plus-story condominiums in the state of Florida, how they were all going to be, you know, certified by a set date, but I know this is just general housekeeping, complying with state law, so I'll be, I'll vote for the measure. Good deal. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Absolutely. Any other questions?
I move approval of ordinance number 2024-11.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Please call the vote.
Commissioner Tolland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Brierley?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. Nine B.
Ordinance number 2024-12, an ordinance adopting certain updated schedules to the capital improvements element of the city of Ormond Beach Comprehensive Plan, providing when such update shall take effect, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number 2024-12, read by title only.
Thank you. I don't have any cards on this one.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussions or questions for Stephen? If not, please call the vote.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Brierley?
Yes.
Commissioner Tolland?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. Nine C.
Ordinance number 2024-13, an ordinance annexing one parcel of real property into the city of Ormond Beach, said property located at 1281 North US Highway 1, Volusia County, parcel number 4206-00-00-0030, setting forth zoning privileges and obligations regarding the property, redefining the territorial boundaries of the city of Ormond Beach to include the property, redesignating the boundaries of Zone 1 of the city of Ormond Beach to include the property, providing for transmission, providing for severability, and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number 2024-13, read by title only.
Thank you. Again, no cards.
I move approval of ordinance number 2024-13.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Brierley?
Yes.
Commissioner Tolland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. Nine D.
Ordinance number 2024-14, an ordinance annexing one parcel of real property into the city of Ormond Beach, said property being located at 651 South Ridgewood Avenue, Volusia County, parcel number 4242-20-32-0100, redefining the territorial boundaries of the city of Ormond Beach to include the property, redesignating the boundaries of Zone 2 of the city of Ormond Beach to include the property, setting forth zoning privileges and obligations regarding the property, providing for transmission, providing for severability and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number 2024-14, read by title only.
Thank you. No cards on D.
Move approval.
Second.
Any further discussion or questions? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Brierley?
Yes.
Commissioner Tolland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. Nine E.
Ordinance number 2024-16, an ordinance amending Chapter 2, District and General Regulations, Article 6, Overlay Districts, Section 2-71, Historic Districts and Landmarks of the city of Ormond Beach Land Development Code, by amending the name of the historic landmark of 38 East Granada Boulevard from the McDonald House to the stout McDonald House on the historic landmarks list, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, providing for severability and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2024-16, read by title only.
Thank you. I don't have any cards.
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. The only thing I'll say, this came with a unanimous recommendation from the Historic Landmark Board. Any other questions or comments? All right, please call the vote.
Commissioner Tolland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Brierley?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. Nine F.
Ordinance number 2024-17, an ordinance approving the final plat for the Archer's Mill Phase II subdivision, shown within Phase 3 of the Plantation Oaks planned residential development, establishing conditions and expiration date of approval and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2024-17, read by title only.
Thank you. No cards.
So move.
Second.
Any further discussion or questions? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Brierley?
Yes.
Commissioner Tolland?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. Nine G.
Ordinance number 2024-18, an ordinance approving the final plat for the Archer's Mill Phase VI subdivision, shown within Phase 3 of the Plantation Oaks planned residential development, establishing conditions and expiration date of approval and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2024-18, read by title only.
Thank you. No cards on G.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion or questions? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Brierley?
Yes.
Commissioner Tolland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. Nine H.
Ordinance number 2024-19, an ordinance approving the final plat for the Tides Edge at Ormond Beach subdivision, establishing conditions and expiration date of approval and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2024-19, read by title only.
Thank you. I don't have any cards. Just need a motion and a second.
Move approval.
I think Mr. Spraker would like to speak, Mr. Mayor.
He's welcome to. Yep. Stephen, you want to put something on the record?
Good evening. Stephen Spraker, planning director. So during the subdivision process for this project, staff received concerns about grading in stormwater for the subdivision. The applicant staff have worked with residents in the area. One of the results of the discussion was the arrangement for gutters to be installed on certain properties. So there are certain properties located here, this lot here, and this lot here. So those actually are but existing single-family houses. So one of the agreements between the resident lot 11, which is down here on Magnolia, was a gutter system to be installed by the home builder. What we would ask the commission to do is to condition this plat to require gutters on lots 11, 7, and 4, and that would be constructed during the home construction. We believe that will help with stormwater to ensure the waters coming off the building will go directly into the stormwater system. So staff recommend approval. The planning board recommend approval. The developer is willing to accept that plat and construct the gutter, and the project engineers here, if there are any questions.
Thank you, Stephen. And that language is in the ordinance as far as the gutters go?
It needs to be an amendment. It is not in it.
So we'll entertain an amendment. Commissioner Tolland?
So gutters on the structures.
On the structures for lot 11, 7, and 4.
And do, is, were there any problems with, like, flooding from, like, do we have to do added swales or anything like that from this property to the existing property? I mean, we certainly don't want to burden, not burden, but flood, you know, existing homes.
So the stormwater design was to ensure that all the water within the subdivision stays on the subdivision. But there is a great difference, right?
Right.
But the design is to go into the stormwater ponds, which you see here in the rectangles. The gutters will assist further, so we believe we're going above and beyond what the typical stormwater system would go. As the project, the project is still under construction, as the project goes to the final closeout, there'll be a survey that shows that it is constructed per the approved plan. The engineer who designed this will have to certify that it's designed per the plan.
Perfect.
And we will continue to watch it after acceptance. There's a one-year bond, so if there are issues, we will continue to watch. Unfortunately, there really hasn't been a heavy enough rain to see exactly how it will operate under a heavy storm.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if there's no other discussion, I move approval of item H with the amendment to require gutters on lots 11, 7, and 4.
Second.
During construction, the gutters?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we'll vote on the amendment first to nine H, and we have a motion and a second for that.
Yeah.
That's what we said.
Yeah.
Madam Clerk, if you would, call the vote on the amendment.
Commissioner Brierley?
Yes.
Commissioner Tolland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. And now, if you would, call the vote. I don't believe there's any further questions or comments on nine H as amended to include gutters during construction on the structure be required for lots 11, 7, and 4. This is 2024-19.
Commissioner Tolland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Brierley?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. Nine I.
Ordinance number 2024-20, an ordinance amending the future land use element of the Comprehensive Plan of the city of Ormond Beach by amending the future land use map to change the designation of 1.33 plus or minus acres located along Benton Street north of Atlantic Road, Volusia County, parcel number 3136-01-34-0220, and 3136-01-01-0022, from medium-density residential to low-intensity commercial, providing for conflict, authorizing, transmittal, and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2024-20, read by title only.
Thank you. And I don't have any cards on nine I.
I move approval of ordinance number 2024-20.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions for Stephen? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryley?
Yes.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. Nine J.
Resolution number two thousand twenty-four dash one twelve, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Orman Beach, Florida, providing consent to Orman Beach Arts District, Inc., for the public display of Seward Johnson sculptures within the downtown overlay district, providing for conditions and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number two thousand twenty-four dash one twelve, read by title only.
Thank you. And Susan, you can ask me to slow down at any time. You've been doing great, but I don't want to drive you crazy. Um, so nine J, I don't know if, Mr. Spraker, did you want to put anything on the record on this one? Not necessarily. I do have one card from Julia Trillo, and we'll, we'll hear from her and then have a motion in a second. It did say if needed. I'm sorry, I just saw that, Julia.
Um, I will just put in my plug anyway.
That's right.
Uh, I'm Julia Trillo. I am the president of the Board of Directors for Orman Beach Arts District. And firstly, we want to say thank you for your support for this project. It has been an amazing journey for us. I wanted you to know that we have thirteen sculptures sponsored, so we've raised fifty-two thousand dollars to bring these pieces to Orman Beach. And that, I will leave you to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great.
Just need a motion and a second.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion?
I want to say something.
Oh, Commissioner Persis with a comment?
No, I, I just want to say this, this brings economic development to our city. It is so exciting. Um, it improves our beautification in our city and our quality of life, which is the cornerstone of Orman Main Street's mission, which I know. So thank you all so much.
Good stuff. Anyone else?
I just want to say I concur, Commissioner Persis. I'm very proud of, of, of you all and what you bring into the city, and I'm really excited to see it, and I hope that we can continue this program in the future.
Thank you, Commissioner Talland. And with that, I'll ask the clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryley?
Yes.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. And we will close the public hearings and go to first reading of ordinances, starting with ten A.
Ordinance number two thousand twenty-four dash twenty-one, an ordinance amending Section three point three dash twenty-four, tie-down fees of Article Three Aircraft Ground Operations of Chapter three point three Aircraft and Airport of the Code of Ordnances of the City of Orman Beach, Florida, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, providing severability and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number two thousand twenty-four dash twenty-one, read by title only.
Thank you. I don't have any cards. Is Brian here?
Mr. Mayor, I can just be brief on this.
Or Joyce?
This is the first step in the process to implementing that, those fees that we talked about during the budget workshop. So that's what this is all.
Great. First step. That's what I thought.
I move approval of ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash twenty-one.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Bryley?
Yes.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. Eleven A, second reading of ordinances?
Ordinance number two thousand twenty-four dash fifteen, an ordinance of the City of Orman Beach, Florida, amending Article Four Police Officers Pension Trust Fund of Chapter Sixteen Pensions and Retirement of the Code of Ordnances, amending Section sixteen dash seventy-seven Pre-Retirement Death, amending Section sixteen dash eighty Optional Forms of Benefits, amending Section sixteen dash eighty-six Minimum Distribution of Benefits, Providing for Severability of Provisions, Providing for Codification, Repealing All Ordnances in Conflict Here With, and Providing an Effective Date. This is the second reading of ordinance number two thousand twenty-four dash fifteen, read by title only.
Thank you. And I don't have any cards.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to say, uh, my only comment on this is upon, upon passage of this, this is well-deserved, long overdue, and I'm very happy this is on our agenda.
Thank you. Commissioner Sargent?
I'd just like to echo the same thing, and thank you for, um, and I think this backdates too, to help Officer Bakays' family as well, and to the, uh, the Police Pension Board and the, um, staff that, that brought this to our attention to, to get it corrected. Thank you.
Commissioner Persis?
And I agree with Commissioner Sargent and Deputy Mayor Bryley. This is long overdue, and we're very thrilled this, this has come before us, so we can help. Thank you.
Long overdue and well-deserved.
Perfect. All right. Please call the vote.
I need a, a motion and a second.
So move approval?
Second.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryley?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. Resolutions twelve A.
Resolution number two thousand twenty-four dash one thirteen, a resolution appointing a member to serve on the Brownfield Advisory Board, setting forth terms and conditions of service and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number two thousand twenty-four dash one thirteen, read by title only.
Commissioner Sargent?
Are we taking nominations?
Sure.
I'd like to nominate April Cole, um, to serve on the Brownfield Advisory Board.
I'd second that.
And I was going to nominate her too.
How do you spell her last name?
C-O-L-E.
C-O-L-E.
Cole.
Cole. Yeah. April.
Sorry, I have a cough drop.
No worries. Any other nominations? If not, then will you bring back a resolution for us, or you want us to vote on that?
You can vote on it this evening. We have resolutions prepared for the three advisory boards that we have tonight.
Perfect.
So we can just fill it in.
All right. So we've got a motion and a second for April Cole on twenty-four dash one thirteen. Any other discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryley?
Yes.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. Twelve B.
Resolution number two thousand twenty-four dash one fourteen, a resolution appointing a member to serve on the Leisure Services Advisory Board, setting forth terms and conditions of service and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number two thousand twenty-four dash one fourteen, read by title only.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes. I'd like to nominate Lindsay Pate.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. Any other nominations? Then please call the vote on resolution twenty-four dash one fourteen with the name of Lindsay Pate.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryley?
Yes.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. Twelve C.
Resolution number two thousand twenty-four dash one fifteen, a resolution appointing a member to serve on the Volusia Growth Management Commission, establishing term and conditions of service and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number two thousand twenty-four dash one fifteen, read by title only.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Bryley?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate Bill Navara to the Volusia Growth Passport Commission.
Second.
Got it. All right. Any other nominations? If not, then if you would, please call the vote on resolution twenty-four dash one fifteen with the name of Bill Navara.
Commissioner Bryley?
Yes.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. And that takes us to Staff Action Items, and this is the Florida League of Cities Voting Delegate. I think Commissioner Persis did it last year. Are you interested again this year?
Sure. I'd like to, yeah.
Anyone else?
I don't mind nominating Travis Sargent. I think he would be as what, good as well to spread it unless Susan, you're on another board with the Florida League of Cities, right? Are you on advocacy or something?
I'm on two.
Two. So I, I think it would be nice to spread it out.
Anybody, yeah, I mean.
It, I'm not trying to, I'm just trying to spread out the.
You just go in and.
Absolutely.
Yeah. But it's fine.
Anybody can go to the meeting and, uh, it's just.
No, I think, I'll second Travis.
You'll be there?
Thank you.
Perfect. So the motion is Commissioner Talland on Commissioner Sargent, seconded by Commissioner Persis. Please call the vote.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryley?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. And reports, suggestions, and requests. And tonight, we start with City Manager Joyce Shanahan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of things to bring to your attention and then move forward. First of all, we have scheduled for your August twentieth workshop to discuss Yellowstone landscaping. We're still working on the other issue about NID, and so I've pushed that out for a while. I'd like to introduce Assistant City Manager Sean Finley. You saw him earlier today, and we're very proud of him being up here tonight.
Awesome.
The repairs at the PAC fire damage are, continue to be underway. The first electrical inspection to rewire the aisle lighting has been completed. The drywall replacement is well underway. As the materials arrive, they are being installed and replaced. Construction is currently ahead of schedule. Bomar, Bomar was doing that, and they had pre-ordered some of that, um, items that we had, so that helped us get a jump start on that. I think they're looking for ETA maybe sometime November, December for ribbon cutting again. Let's see. Summer camp is under full swing, um, and soon, I, I don't know when kids go back to school. Is it after Labor Day these?
August twelfth.
August twelfth? That's crazy.
Not soon enough.
Seems early.
But parents are saying hallelujah. I only have cats, so I, I, I can't appreciate that. Just a couple of things coming up. Summer Sounds Concert Series Friday, July nineteenth and twenty-sixth. Preliminary, uh, planning of future events. We have the Volusia League of Cities banquet that we're hosting this year. That's on nine twenty-sixth. We'll be hosting that. The State of the City Luncheon is on October eighth. And the last of the four, um, fishing tournaments, Reel and the Fun, is on ten five. I wanted to let you know that sandbags are, sand piles are in place, that anybody can help themselves at the Orman Rec Center. You bring your ID and you can get ten sandbags. People often inquire, why do we limit it to ten? Because those bags are very heavy, and if you put more than ten in your car, you're going to break the suspension in your car. So we don't want to be responsible for that. If a storm is named out there and we, we are in the cone of disaster, we will staff that sandpile with, uh, public work staff, and they do a great job with that. They'll help you, they have plenty of shovels, they'll help the folks fill it. If you have elderly neighbors that can't get out, please have them call Public Works. Sean, what's that number?
Six seven six three two two zero.
If they call that number and if they're shut in, we will deliver those sandbags to their house. We don't install them, but we will deliver them to their house. And, you know, I will tell you that our Public Works guys are so great that they probably will help you out to put them where you need to. But I can't guarantee that. But they are so wonderful. They do so much, so. You have to show your ID to get the bags. Last thing, um, I wanted to say that you have in front of you tonight, if you could lift up that jar, that is EDC honey from the Environmental Discovery Center. The bees that are inside the enviro, environmental center, we have, if you've ever been there, you can see the live hive, and that is, um, honey from those bees. So we're really excited about that. And, um, I want to thank the commission for, um, uh, the work they did on the police pension plan. That was not something intentional. That was something that was overlooked decades ago, and unfortunately, it just came to light when Officer Bakaysa passed, and I want to thank the commission and the community that's been so generous to the Bakaysa family and to continue to keep them in their thoughts and prayers. And I'm happy to answer any questions, if you should have any, for me tonight.
Thank you, Joyce. Any questions for the city manager?
I have one.
Yes, sir.
Why does just the commission have the honey? I'm a little concerned. Are you trying to get rid of us?
They didn't give me any. I would have loved to have had honey, but they didn't give me any, so. No, that's okay. But no, isn't that exciting?
Very is.
I just saw the bees about three weeks ago, or when we were at, at the Environmental Discovery Center for Susan's wonderful civic, uh, leadership class, and the bees were so active, and it was so exciting. You could hear them buzzing about and flying in and flying out. It's just so exciting. I just love the bees and the turtles over there, so thank you very much. Good night.
Good stuff. Thank you. Assistant City Manager Sean Finley.
Just want to thank everyone for having me and wish everyone else good night.
Thank you, Sean. City Attorney Randy Hayes?
Nothing. I say anything, just, uh, remind you that, uh, we've worked through all the details on, uh, resolving the dispute between Flagler County and Hunter's Ridge, so, uh, we plan to have that on your next agenda. It'd be nice to close that out and put it behind us.
Great. Thank you, Randy. And tonight, we start with Commissioner Sargent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to congratulate Commissioner Bryley and Talland on being reelected, and I look forward to serving with y'all for another two years. I, I got a call today about the flash-in light at Rockefeller on Beachside, and it I got a call today about the flash-in light at Rockefeller on Beachside, and it flashes, it goes red when someone's crossed, then it flashes red. The sign says to proceed slowly when it's flashing red. It's very confusing. People were stopping. I don't know if we can work with FDOT on that. Maybe it can flash yellow. Flashing red seems a little.
Please stop.
That's a, what they've installed there is kind of the next step. It's a hybrid beacon, and so it's a little bit different than the RFBs. One of the things we had heard previously about the RFBs, with the yellow, and that was a little confusing to people. What we can do is we can find some information and try and share with people, educate them how to use those hybrid beacons. DOT has a lot of good information, and I will get Jen to link our website to them. And one of the key groups we also want to reach out to are some of the hotels. And so we'll get to some of those people who are the visitors to our area and make sure that they know how to use them as well. So we can, thank you for the heads up, and we'll try and do our best to educate people on how to use them.
Thank you. Excuse me. And then recently, there was a, there's been several Facebook posts or on social media, different places. I've gotten several phone calls over the last almost two weeks where there was a poll taken asking if someone, if people preferred tennis courts or condos on Beachside where the current tennis courts are at Rockefeller, the Casement area. And I just would like the residents to know some facts about what's going on over there. The tennis courts are currently leased out for a three-year term, and the city has the option to renew that for an additional three years. The property is not for sale. At the June 15th, 2023 Leisure Service Advisory Board, at that meeting, the following action occurred. A motion was made by Doug Thomas to apply for an ECHO grant for the Ormond Beach Tennis Center to update the tennis courts to LED lighting and to build a small building for a pro shop with restrooms. The motion passed unanimously. And I think what's a key fact here is that that is an advisory board to the Commission. The Commission never applied for the ECHO grants for the above items. So I want to assure the residents in Zone 2 and all of our community that as long as I'm sitting here, I would never entertain selling that property, never. In today's political climate with everything going on and recent events, I would like to remind those that are running for office to stay focused and positive. Run for the people and not against your opponent. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. And Commissioner Persis?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I just want to congratulate Sean Finley again. I'm so excited for you, Sean. It's just, you know, just really nice seeing you sitting up there. So again, congratulations. We're very happy. And I also want, I mentioned Chief Bailey earlier, but I had a friend that had, almost had a house fire, and she called the fire station, it was Station 92. And they were there within minutes and helped her and even helped pull the dryer that almost caught her whole house on fire, pulled it out to the road to get it out of the house because it was giving off smoke and fumes, et cetera. But they went above and beyond to help, and I just know that's the kind of quality of firemen we have, the kind of quality of police officers we have and our first responders. That's just one example. So I just wanted to commend you for that. So please share my best wishes and how proud I am of all of them. It was awesome. And I also just want to thank Chris Spile and Kelly McGuire for all your work. I'm not sure where they are, if they're still here. But gosh, working on that budget has got to be so difficult. It's got to take weeks and weeks to get everything straight, but they just do a fabulous job and make it easy for us to, you know, come up with our recommendations. So thank you both for that. And I just want to say, it seemed like a long time ago, but the Fourth of July was this month still, and we had a fabulous Fourth of July. So thank you, Leisure Services. Thank you for all that you did to make it so special for all of our residents. Thank you, and good evening, everyone.
Thank you. Commissioner, Deputy Mayor Brierley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A few things that I always want to talk about, it's already been mentioned, but I do want to congratulate Commissioner Tolland, Commissioner Sargent on your reelections. And I'd also like to thank the residents of Zone 4 who allowed me to return to office unopposed. I did want to mention, it was interesting, the Cockman Davis Center folks who are here. And speaking of Metro Electronics, of course, that's our own Bill Jones that has Metro Electronics and helping out in the community, and I think it's just another testament to the kind of person Bill Jones is and what he means to our community. As Commissioner Persis stated, the fireworks were fantastic. Mr. Mayor, you did a fantastic job getting them, you know, set off for us, starting the event. Commissioner Sargent, I'm sorry you weren't there, but I know you were on vacation, so, but, and thank you as well to Robert and Stefan and everyone at Leisure Services for making that happen. Always a great, great show. Also, thank you to, as Commissioner Persis said, to Chris Spile and to Kelly McGuire and our Budget Advisory Board for putting, doing, you know, the Budget Advisory Board doing the heavy lifting, and Kelly and Chris with presenting the budget. You know, it's never easy, and for, you know, for this Commission to be a five-to-zero vote on first reading, I think says a lot to the work they put into it. So I would also like to congratulate Mr. Finley. Well deserved. I've known Sean for a few years, and actually, our fathers used to work together many, many years ago. And Sean is a fantastic addition to this role, so congratulations, Sean. Looking forward to the Tamoka Elementary School ribbon cutting on August 9th? August 8th? I'm sorry, August 8th. Hope to see everyone there. I think that should be exciting. It's going to be a nice, nice addition to Ormond Beach. And lastly, I will mention, and I did get an invitation on this, and I know this will be of special interest to Commissioner Tolland. This Friday at 11:00 a.m. at the Daytona Beach Shores Community Center, there's going to be a Mayor's Mental Health Care Services Conference. And it's not open to just mayors and deputy mayors or vice mayors, it's also open to any, I guess, elected official that would like to attend. So I just thought I'd mention that. I know Mayor Partington can't be there. I was invited to be there. I do plan to be there, but I also thought, you know, any of the rest of us would like to attend, please, you know, feel free to attend. And with that, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And Commissioner Tolland?
Thank you so much. And just as a comment to that, Harold, I will be out of town on Friday, but I would love to get a report on that meeting and that lunch and see, because that definitely is always something dear to my heart. Just as another reminder, Main Street, Christmas in July is this weekend, and congratulations on your awards. You all really do work very hard, and it's all very well-deserved. And I'm extremely proud of Nancy and, yes, thank you. And just wanted to lift them up. And the sculpture series, how awesome is that? You know, we're going to have, we're going to have something really fun in Ormond Beach, so I'm excited about that. When you were talking, Commissioner Persis, I did have something I'd like to share about our firefighters and my personal experience. Just a few weeks ago, while I was at church at Prince of Peace, we had a parishioner pass out, and this is the second time it's happened to me in church, and called 911. At this time, I actually knew the address because last time I didn't, in the crossroad, Division Street. They were there with the county. Within minutes, they handled the situation beautifully. You know, this was right, and if you guys ever know anything about Mass, it was right in the middle of the consecration when it's very quiet, and everybody's heads down and praying and the whole thing, and they handled the whole situation very professional and very well. And I just want to thank our fire department. They're awesome. Fourth of July was fun. Was hot as the dickens. Had a few grandchildren there, and they thought that was the best thing in the whole wide world, was to push that plunger and see those fireworks go off. They actually thought they did that, so it was kind of fun to see. Great celebration. Congratulations to Leisure Services for always putting on a great event. Thank my fellow commissioners for some great discussion on the budget. I'm always very proud to be a part of this group. We come at different angles, not always sure how the discussion's going to go or where we're going to be, but I think we have a lot of respect for each other. We have respect for staff and for all the department heads and all the hard work that they do. And I just love the good discussion and the resolutions that we come up with. So I'm just very proud to be a part of this group, and I'm also very proud to be serving again for another two years with Harold and Travis. And maybe you never know others, you know? And so I'm just excited to continue to serve the city. As far as that beacon goes with FDOT, I did the walk with FDOT that day, and I do remember that being a question because it was very confusing. And the FDOT response to us at the time was that it is a learning curve, and they really did want to put out that information, but this is, those lights that blink for that beacon is a standard that they're using everywhere, and it's just something new to us. So we do have to have an education piece, and maybe Jen can even be part of that education piece for us. Let's see. And the last thing I want to end with is, is I just want to send out some condolences to one of our constituents, Fred Hain, on the passing of his wife this week. He has served the city on boards, and he's always here at meetings, and he's got a beautiful heart, and I just want all of us to kind of keep him and his family in our prayers. So with that, I'll say good night.
Thank you, Commissioner. And, yeah, a few condolences going out. I know Dr. Cartilage's wife passed on the 12th, I believe it was. Beautiful lady, kind, smart, and just a beautiful family, and so sad for them. Gary Connors, somewhat unexpectedly, so sad and difficult for the family when it's so sudden, sudden like that. Really is a shock, but if you can keep those folks, I think it's great for you to ask to keep them in your thoughts and prayers during this difficult time. So thank you. Thank you for doing that. Congratulations, commissioners, on your reelections. That really is an awesome, awesome vote of confidence from your constituents, and you should feel good about that and the fact that you don't have to worry about everything involved in campaigning, because it is a lot, as you know. And so to be given that gift by your constituents, a vote of confidence and a vote of extra time is a wonderful, wonderful thing and well-deserved. Main Street, I love what you do for our community. You know, Nancy is incredible, well-deserved recognition for her. Tyce is an amazing artist, and I love her story about how she came to and fell in love with Ormond Beach. Has she told you that story? Yep. Her car was packed basically with everything that she owned in the world. She drove over the Granada Bridge and saw all the green and the downtown and just fell in love and stayed. I think she had been driving up the coast. I can't remember if it was from the Keys or where, but get her to tell you the story. It's really a wonderful story.